Good evening. This is a call to order of the Bridgeport Board of Education regular meeting. Today's Tuesday, October 14th, and it is 6:34 PM. If everybody could please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Benahan, can you take the roll?
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Watson. Mr. Robert Traver. Mr. Justice Sakalov. Ms. Jennifer Perez. Mr. William Medina. Ms. Maritza Estremera Jimenez. Ms. Akiya Casamia. Ms. Akiya Casamia.
Yeah.
Ms. Christine Ortiz Perez. Myself here.
Thank you. We're going to start with the student representatives. We have two in person, and we'll start with in person, then we'll go online. So we can, when you're ready, you could click the mic.
Hello, my name is Brian Almeida, and I'm a senior at Aqua Culture as well as student at Central Magnet High School. I'm proud to announce that our student-run seafood market Angie's Aqua is officially open for the new school year. The market operates every Thursday that school is in session from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM, and features fresh, student-prepared seafood. It's a great opportunity for our community to support student learning and enjoy high-quality products. Our oceanography class recently participated in the Yukon Early College Experience cardboard boat race. And we placed third in our heat. Students said it was fun and educational experience and challenged their teamwork and engineering skills. We are also very excited to have launched the Sealing Club this year. Students have been actively preparing boat maneuvering balance and wind management. In addition to our non, to our on-campus activities, we've been reaching out to future Aqua students. We've held informational sessions at middle schools across our sending districts and welcome seventh and eighth graders from Bridgeport for a field trip to our school. These visits included tours of facilities and hands-on exercises activities, either on our research vessel or our hatchery. Finally, I'd like to share the applications for the next school year are now open, and we're hosting an open house October 22nd for any interested students and families. It's a great chance to learn more about our program, as you will Aqua make such a unique, inspiring place to learn. Thank you for your time and continued support of our program.
Thank you.
My name is Rebecca Bistro, and I'm a senior hardcore in high school. So we've had, so we've had an exciting start of the school year. First, we've had our student council who hosted our Harding 100th homecoming dance, and over 200 students attended. We also had our medical magnet academy who raised money to donate to charities that provide assistance to children fighting cancer. And our medical magnet also plan on raising money and awareness during the backup and full festival. That will be happening like on the 23rd. And the full festival, there will be four games, crafts, and face painting music, and all of these are created by students. We have a bilingual department. Who's gonna be hosting our Hispanic Heritage concert and multicultural fairness. And lastly, we have created a senior committee for the seniors at Harding, known as the Harding 100th, to ensure that they get to plan their senior year as they wish to, and to make their senior year like the best and memorable. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And then we have the student rep from BMA online.
Good afternoon. My name is David. I'm representing Bridgeport Military Academy. These past two weeks, we have leadership training and the Columbus Parade. The leadership training last Friday, eh, on Friday 14th, BMA NGRDC cadets went to the Camp Net in Neantik, Connecticut to participate in the Area 1 Basic Leadership Training. This training is for cadets to hone their leadership skills. Events include a medical relay, a statistic displaying of a CT Army National Guard fire truck weapon for familiarization, and took the Army Fitness Test. Cadets earned a ribbon and represented BMA well with two other schools. On Sunday, on Sunday 26th, cadets marched in the 107th and well-graded Bridgeport Area Columbus Day Parade. Last week, SAT for seniors and PSAT for juniors and sophomores and freshmen. Ninety-eight percent have completed the NWE math benchmark for fall, and nearly 95% have completed the Reading Plus for the fall. For this week, we're the, yeah, we are doing Reading Plus and King Academy, and we're also planning homecoming and company competitions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you to the student reps. We look forward to continuing hearing from you guys throughout the year. Next, we have a public comment, and Jess Resto, you're up.
Good evening. Jess Resto, PAC president at Park City Magnet School. Unfortunately, George Garcia and Dr. Avery aren't here. But we just wanted to take a minute to thank some amazing people who helped our school beautification project become such a success. A huge thank you to George Garcia and the entire BOE facilities crew, especially Penny, who was incredible, and to George's wife, who jumped right in with so much enthusiasm and heart. It was such a great example of teamwork and meant a lot to all of us. We also want to thank the Aspetuck Land Trust for partnering with us and donating all the beautiful plants. The kids were so excited to help. They were digging and planting, laughing together, and you could feel just the pride that they had in making their school look better. And a very special thank you to the acting superintendent, Dr. Avery. You didn't just show up. You stayed, you rolled up your sleeves, and you planted right alongside the kids. My husband and I both said afterwards, in all the years, he's been in Bridgeport, we've never seen a superintendent do what you're doing. You're really connecting with the kids and the community, not just showing up for a photo, but actually being a part of it. And we wanted to, we want, we just want everyone to know how grateful Park City Magnet is for the kind, for, sorry. We just want everyone to know how grateful Park City Magnet is for the kind of leadership, teamwork, and genuine care. When our students see adults showing up for them like that, it teaches them pride, unity, and what community it looks like. Bridgeport kids deserve this kind of love and leadership, and we're so thankful to everyone who helped that, make that happen. We do have cars and stuff for them, but they're not here, so I'll just give them to PJ.
Yeah, go on, leave a little. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have approval of the meeting minutes from the regular meeting on September 22nd, 2025. Is there a motion to approve those? Moved by Mr. Benahan, seconded by Mr. Traver. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor to approve them, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Moving on to the chairperson's report, I just want to give a quick update on some of the things we've worked on since last meeting. We had a workshop on September 30th to discuss our committee structure. And we, we've, Abe facilitated that workshop, so we were just discussing our current structure and what are some ideas we have for improvements, and looking at best practices. So we're going to continue to work with Abe. They're contracted us to support us in updating all our policies, so we're going to continue working on that through the policy committee, and hopefully sooner than later, we'll have that drafted out. We'll move on. Any questions for that? Mr. Sakalov.
Yeah, I got a question about the last meeting agenda. We tabled an issue about the legal, the legal services agreement. There was three firms that bid. Couple of score sheets seem to need updating. It's been two weeks, has, happens not on the agenda this time. I know we've got a legislation coming up where the city wants to take over the legal department, so I think it will behoove us to get that settled before then. So we avoid the appearance of trying to wait until after the election to see what's going to happen.
Yeah, I'll go back to you. I'll try to have it for the next meeting. It wasn't ready for us today, so I'll double check the council on it.
I mean, yeah, just, just to be clear, what they need to do is add up about five scores ranging from one to five and just get it proper. So it's not something that's very difficult for them to do.
Anybody else? Alrighty. For committee reports, the finance committee has not met since the last board meeting. Our next meeting is going to be on October 29th. And with that said, do you have any referrals to that committee other than what was referred last time?
Yeah, sorry. It's not really a referral, but have we gotten anywhere with finding out what contract we are now viable, bindable to from the state for the buses? Have we gotten any more information about that?
Not yet, but I can bring it to the committee for report.
Thank you, yes.
Mrs. Medina.
Yes, I haven't heard anything regarding the report on the finances for PTSO PAC, for the district PAC. We've been waiting since last year, and also I'm not sure if anything came up yet to update the PAC and PTSO leaders on what funds they have available. I was asked by a few presidents trying to find out what they have in their budget that where they can plan, and I haven't seen anything, so. Thank you.
I think that was, yeah. We'll, we'll try to get that up for you. See nothing else? Mr. Traver, you're committing? Can you put your microphone on?
Just, again, this is in the realm of repetitive questions. Any news on the $5 million either?
No.
Just nothing? Okay.
All right. Do you want to do your report now?
Hold on, I'm just writing. Yes, Madam Chair, the ISS committee met a couple of weeks ago, and we approved several student actions. The debate team grant, which is that on here tonight? Yes, item one and the new business, and the field trip to DC, which is on here tonight, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and then the, we then had a discussion about middle school sports, and began that discussion as an ongoing discussion throughout the year, which was what we initiated initially discussed last spring. So we began that discussion as to what we're doing with middle school sports with the athletic director. We got an update on staffing and a report that was presented to us at the meeting. And we will continue that discussion. Again, it's an ongoing topic of discussion at the committee. And we also initiated the discussion on the return of kindergarten parents. And at that point, we passed the referral that's being brought to the full board tonight. Or actually was brought to the full board at the special meeting last week to bring kindergarten parents back to the level they were at last year. And then we got an update on the special ed. And we tabled the discussion on the technology update, which we will discuss at the meeting at the end of the month.
When's your next meeting?
Pardon me?
Next meeting is what day?
It's the fourth Wednesday, so it would be, hold on, let me just get my calendar out. That would be
22nd.
One, two, three, four, 22nd. So next, a week from tomorrow.
Any referrals for the Instruction Support Services Committee? Hang on. All right, we'll move on. First, out of $100, Ms. Estremera Jimenez has joined online. Mr. Medina, Policy and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Policy and Personnel Committee met on October 8th. We have a few items that were moved forward. We had some great discussions. I want to thank personally Ms. Marissa Jimenez on her great work and following up on, in every item. It was a busy task. We definitely did still have a lot of homework to do and a lot of work that's being done, but we have made great headway on many items, which we had like from letter A to K, and we literally did every single one of them and worked a few of them are before us tonight. Our next meeting will be November 12th, which is again the second Wednesday of the month, and if there's any other referrals or questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The facilities committee has met, or has not met since the last meeting. It's scheduled to meet the 5th, November 5th. We will be adding everything from the canceled meeting back on that agenda, as well as some updates on our that were referred by Mr. Medina. The last time, yeah, last meeting. So there are my email. So any referrals? Mrs. Sakalov.
Yeah, you got my standing referral on the facilities master plan discussion.
Mr. Traver? Uh, November 5th.
When is the meeting, sorry?
November 5th.
November 5th. Some dead body to be falling in here on November 5th.
All right.
When was policy, I'm sorry?
Sorry, sir. Yes, November 12th is the next meeting.
And finance? I missed that.
Finance is October 29th.
Thank you.
Mrs. Sakalov, do you have anything for cave?
Just came off. Yes, I'm cool. Yeah, Thursday is going to be the Cave Legal Workshops meeting, whoever signed up, if, I don't know if it's too late to sign up if anybody wants to go. It's 8:30 at the lyceum, this registration, and nine to 12 is the program. They're going to be discussing understanding the legal pitfalls of social media used by board members and administrators, a year review in court, important court and agency decisions since October, and managing employee attendance despite new legislative mandates.
All right, so we're going to move on. Miss Hughes, are you doing the superintendent's report? Miss Hughes, or, okay, Mr. Karafa, Miss Hughes will be delivering Dr. Avery's report. Dr. Avery's out today. So in his absence, the, our assistant superintendent and Mr. Karafa. What's your title? Chief Information Officer will be presenting. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. All right, today we're going to take you through the superintendent's report. Basically, I wanted to talk about October 1st right now, our collection. So part of this is important for you to know some of this information. I'll talk a little bit about not only the collection, but the collection period. We'll look at comparisons between last year and this year, and pretty much get an idea of what we're looking at for our student counts, as well as some other information that is available in the packet. So this year, everyone knows that our October 1st collection is really from October 1st to January 26th, which is, excuse me, January 31st, 2026, which is our freeze date. That means we have between now, October 1st, and January 31st, 2026, to be able to fix data, clean data, be able to work on elements of the data that we have given to the state. What happens is during October 1st, there are a lot of things that happen. That's the date they use to pay us for the students who are sitting in the seats in the classroom. With that date coming on, they have a system called PSIS, which is the Public School Information System. Basically, what happens is we register, every child is registered, goes up to the PSIS system, which is the Public School Information System. And the state has a record of those students. There are some cases where they're called concurrent cases, where for instance, a student is registered in Bridgeport but takes the day off and then decides to go to another district. They enroll them on that day, and then we do kind of a court case, which is we fight to say, nope, they've been with us. The other district says, nope, they've been with us, and basically that's how we resolve and get these students back into the district. As of today, we're about 517 students short of where we were last year. So our enrollment right now is obviously not to where we need it. We have a brand-new enrollment center that has been doing extended hours and has been working with families to try to bring them in. I will admit, we're still having issues with ICE and certain families that will not register for whatever the reason may be. As you can see, our, our count right now as of 10/9 was 19,000, 1,132 students. At that time, we are now approximately 517 students less than where we were at that point. Certain grade levels that come out of this are, our first grade seems to be down 165 students, and our fourth grade seems to be down 133 students. I don't have answers for that on why they're down. I can tell you that, as I spoke at the podium before, we do have approximately anywhere between 6,000 and 6,200 students who live in Bridgeport, who do not go to a Bridgeport public school. Those children either go to a private parochial charter. They come in and out of the district every year. Our exits right now are approximately 1,630 students as of 7/1. Our entries at this point are 2,312 students. What that means is as fast as they're exiting, they're coming back into the district also. Usually, when we look at 20,000 or 20,000, you know, 100 students, we're looking at somewhere around anywhere between 23,000 to 25,000 students that walk in the door and either stay with us or exit and go on to another district. For instance, I wanted to bring this up before we get onto the next page. Our facility codes are broke down by state code. So what the state does is the state has a standard defined code system that lets us know when a student exits where they exit to. For instance, in O2 is a public and in-state school district. And right now, we have 524 of our students who have left Bridgeport Public Schools to go to the surrounding towns or in a city somewhere inside of Connecticut. We have approximately 563 of our children who have left us since 7/1, and they are going to a charter school. Those are the two largest components of exits that happen in Bridgeport Public Schools. It's either they're going to a charter school, or they're going to somewhere else in Connecticut, not to, not in Bridgeport Public Schools. Okay, now, the other thing I wanted to point out about our enrollment is that with the hard work of the Enrollment Center, is they're also helping families, not only the extended hours, but they're trying to support with medical documentation. They're also personalized assistance with enrolling families into the district. And as we do every year, we try to put out a memo and actually go ahead and get kids into our seats. We do the best we can to enroll them. I don't want to say recruit because that's the wrong word, but we, we, you know, discuss with them how great Bridgeport Public Schools are, and we try to get them in the seat by October 1st. With that being said, I wanted to take you to the second page right now of the, okay. This is a little, a little bit of history that we discuss, and this second page is just, there are a lot of questions asked. Yes, sir. Yeah, fine, during is fine. Madam Chair.
Do we know, do you know? You mentioned the concern about what effect ICE may be having. Do we know if there's a commensurate drop or decline in other districts, other urbans particularly?
Honestly, I can, I can only speak for us that ELL from last year to this year has lost approximately 263 students from where we were last year. At this point in time.
But we don't know, for instance, Stanford, Norwalk.
Honestly. I do not.
We don't know if they're suffering the same.
I do not.
Or if this is unique to Bridgeport.
No, I, I mean, I can say to you, parents have come in, and they have talked about their concerns inside the Enrollment Center about enrollment and being targeted, but I don't know. Yeah.
Looking for a systemic answer if we're seeing this pattern, if the state is seeing this pattern. No, we don't know.
I don't know.
That's fine. Thank you.
We're gonna, I'm actually gonna hold questions till you're done with presenting.
Okay. So, so right now, I know there's a lot of questions. We tried to put a magnet. It's not really magnet, but a magnet data breakdown, as well as a grade 7, 8, a grade 6, 7, 8. These are just some of the questions that you ask all the time. For instance, Central Magnet, we wanted to give you an idea of how many students are in Central, and how many students take part in the Central Magnet program. Right now, as of when we pulled the report, there were 452 students who were inside of the Central Magnet program inside of Central High School. It's important, I think what we're going to start doing with these reports is showing you the point in time from last year at this time to this year at this time, so you can get a global view on what's going on. Our seventh and eighth grade, we show you that count because a lot of times we're being asked, can we open up middle schools, or can we do something? You get an idea that with 2,839 students in grade 7 and 8, or in grade 6, 7, and 8, which is 4,241 students, we have a decent number of 6, 7, and 8 students, as well as 7 and 8 students who are in the Bridgeport Public Schools. The question has been asked about Fairchild, so we put that in here so everyone can get an idea. As of when the report was run on 10/9, we had 1,056 students who were in Fairchild Wheeler, and it's broken down by the school, so you can see that. We also broke down the intra-district magnet and inter-district magnet, so you can see the counts of that. Questions came up about Aqua students, so we kind of put it on here. How many Bridgeport students are going to the Aqua Culture School? And where they're coming from. And RCA, there was questions asked that we wanted to make sure we captured. I know it's kind of hard to see. It should be in the packet of how many students are going to RCA from our high schools. Okay, next slide. Okay, so this is district enrollment really quick based on sped, um, and MLL, uh, as well as duly identified. This is just a breakdown for you. I'm not gonna get into all of the numbers here. I wanted to make sure you had it. I really want to get into mobility and talk about that a little bit on the next slide. Um, this here, you know, as usual, as I said, we are stable in special ed. In other words, um, what we had last year is close to what we have this year. Um, but our MLL numbers, um, are going down, as I said, uh, approximately 264, I think, less than where we were at last year at this time. That's not to say it won't go up again, but I'm saying with decline of enrollments, you're gonna get decline in that area also. All right, let me take you to the next slide, which is the mobility slide, and we can talk about that a little bit. Okay, so we do a breakdown on mobility a lot. So mobility, what, what I try to do is on, um, on this slide, give you a mobility explanation. So this is the explanation that came out, and what we use is based on how the state calculates their mobility. They do what's called the joiners plus levers formula, and it's pretty much your, your entries plus withdrawals divided by total enrollment times 100, okay? With that being said, um, we right now average somewhere in our high schools, close to, you know, um, 30 to about 45% mobility based on the high schools. It's early now, so there's not that much movement, as you see. But in hall school alone, you know, for an enrollment purpose and entries and withdrawals, our mobility rate at this point is 22.38% of those students who are moving in and out of hall school. Same with Dunbar. If you look at Dunbar, out of the 468 students, there were 46 entries, and there were 54 withdrawals, which gives them a mobility rate of 21.37. Some of our children will end up in 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 different schools, based on, um, living conditions, based on families, um, who are having challenges. Um, when we discuss, you know, at a certain point, um, student engagement, parental engagement, you will find that some of these families, um, have participated in four and five different schools by the time the year is over. Um, I can't speak of why families move or where they're going. This is not controlled transfers at this point. These are entries and exits that are happening inside of the school, and that's how we do our mobility rates based on that. These mobility rates by the end of the year will be somewhere up to about, in a district-wide, somewhere around 30%. So our mobility is moving. When we talk about, you know, why special ed students or why regular ed students, well, they're mobile. I mean, they're transient. Um, they're going from building to building based on, you know, money or, or circumstances or situations, um, from the family. I look at this a lot when we're talking about area kids, kids who are in their attendance zones, kids who stay in that neighborhood school. Sometimes, it's not that a kid doesn't want to stay in a neighborhood school, it's that the family has no choice but to go to, you know, uh, two other schools based on living conditions or, um, based on, um, you know, uh, other circumstances that, that transpire. I wanted to put that in front of you, um, so you had an idea of how the district calculates it. Next time, we'll bring in, so you can see the special ed. We, we broke it out for you where we have mobility rates, um. This, it happens to be everybody, but we recently broke it out. Next time Dr. Avery's report comes out, we'll bring that out, so you can get an idea what that looks like. Um, we also did MLL, so we'll put that in there, so that you can see some of those families who are moving also. This is a combination of everybody that you have in front of you, so you don't have those other two. But I want you to get and be aware of the mobility of those children also, to have an understanding, um, the different areas and different schools that they're going to. We have approximately, so it's not on, on the sheet, but I do want to bring it up. We have approximately, um, by the time the year is done, anywhere between 5 and 800 controlled transfers that are asked each year. This year happens to be a little less at this point now. We're probably at about a couple. I know we're about 240 last time I talked, less than where we're at, where we were at last year. Um, those numbers are, are pretty high. When you ask me, well, what areas? It's all over the place. It isn't really targeted to a certain area. It's targeted to, um, you know, I guess, all areas. I mean, every school has controlled transfers or asks for controlled transfers. Um, we do need to look at policy and start working on it, Mr. Medina. Um, at that point, I think it's important. Um, a lot of what we were looking at from a demographic study and everything else, the questions were brought up about how many of our kids were out on controlled transfers? How many kids are mobile and stay at their home school at this point for their career at that school? Those are questions that have been asked, and hopefully, um, when we start having our discussions, we can bring it out and enlighten you with those children who have been in their schools for their career, and those kids who have been in multiple schools based on their career being here. Okay, um, next. Racial survey, um, I just, I just brought this up quick. This is a lot of numbers, so I, I don't, I don't, I don't want to really go through the numbers. It's for you. I will tell you that we've done some analysis right now, and when, when we look at, um, Hispanic-Latino, right now, you're at about 62%. Um, the reality is, um, at this point, it's probably truer, somewhere more around 66% when we look at, um, the truth in what's there. Right now, we're looking at 62%. The Black and Afro-American is around 26.17, and then you could see some of the other populations, um, that are inside, uh, and where they stand. Um, I'm finding that the numbers are close to where they were last year as far as enrollment at this time, and as far as, um, the racial, um, survey is broken down. So we're, we're really, again, with those 500 students short, but, you know, incapacity, we are pretty much around exactly what we had last year, um, in, in those ethnic, you know, um, areas is what we should say. Um, I'll take questions now if anyone has any.
Mr. Colvin?
Yeah, I'll go in order in, uh, of the presentation. Um, yeah, first, first off, the decrease in enrollment of 517 students is a little troubling. Wow, it's gonna have some impact on the, on our finances, but not an immediate impact because we're held, we're held harmless. But however, as these students matriculate, if we do not reverse this trend, eventually, we will get 517,000, uh, 517 times $11,000 from the state less
Mm-hmm.
to deal with these students. Um, there will be some impact because whatever students we don't capture this year, there's gonna be a few dollars that we don't get on top of our ECS for the students that we would have gotten that over here now. So that's one thing. I would like, um, you mentioned that, um, the outflow of 500 and change, I believe it was, to charter and state schools?
Yes.
How does that compare year over year, like, year over year? Is that a common trend, or is it?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's really, it's a common trend. I mean, um, we, we find a lot more are going into charters, and then the reality is, at, at the end of the year, or in the middle of the year, they end up coming out and coming back to us. So it's kind of any, I'm not saying for everyone, but it's an in-and-out process. It depends on where we are in the year, meaning we lose them, but then we gain them again, you know, mid-year. The state doesn't do their, Joe, I think what, what you're asking for is the state doesn't do their calculations on. It's that October 1st number. So if we gain them back in January, we, we, we have them. It's, we, we have to educate them, but we're not getting the funding for them, is I think your question.
Right.
Yeah.
And what, what, what would you say the percentage of those are that come back after October 1st?
High, and, and I, I would say a large number of students. We're also getting them in from other countries. Uh, obviously, with what's going on in, in our nation, it's a little different, but the trend has been after January or inside of January, they're coming back. And we, we see an influx of students who are coming in. So that October 1st number, as we said, that's another thing we need to, you know, work on from a state law perspective because it does not capture properly the students that are coming in and out of Bridgeport Public Schools.
Right, maybe we should lobby for some sort of a por- proportion, proportional funding.
Makes sense.
See, they get X amount of funding for the year, and then it comes back to whoever's hosting this student. That's a good point. Um, all right, now, you said there's 62 Bridgeport students in Aqua. What's the percentage of the overall?
I, I gotta get that. I, I think, and, and, yeah, don't quote me on that, but I think there was 200 and... I, I don't know. I, I gotta get it for you. I don't know if it's 283, what the number was. So I don't know what the percentage is, but it was somewhere there. It's close to 300 kids that Aqua has every year. And out of that percent, we're actually up this year. We, we're usually down to like 40 kids from Bridgeport.
Yeah, that, that's a little troubling because at best, that's 25% of the students at Aqua in the school that we host, and our other Magnet schools are basically 75% and state-mandated.
Mm-hmm.
So our students aren't taking advantage of the program within our own district, and that goes towards, we need to market this better towards our students because this is a great program.
Mm-hmm.
Our students should definitely have first crack at it. And, uh, I haven't looked at the racial breakdown in the school, but I'm assuming, I'll take, I'll make the assumptions since it's a lot more surrounding districts that...
There is, there is, there is, yeah.
Demographic.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that's an area we need to work on. We need to work on, um, recruiting and bringing our children in. It is a great program. It's something that, uh, you know, I think it would be a positive for our students, and we gotta do a little bit better job on, um, you know, showing them what Aqua's all about.
Okay, then next up, you said, uh, a lot of the, um, impact on, um, students, the decrease in enrollment was, um, you mentioned ICE.
Mm-hmm.
And now I want to address the, um, the MLL decrease as well this year in percentage. What's the overall percentage of MLL currently?
I, I mean, we're, we're less than 6,000. Last year, we were almost, we were 6,200-plus. So we're at about 59, around 59.31 now is where we are.
So approximately 30% and change.
About 30%, yeah, somewhere around there.
Right, and I just want to make this point that the outflow, so what's the percentage of English language learners departing the district in comparison to?
I'll, I'll get you, I'll get you those numbers. It's a great question. I don't have it in front of me, but I'll get you those numbers.
Right, because, because that brings to mind is with the people, some students fleeing to charter schools, which all have less than a 10 to 15% English language learner, except, student body.
Sure.
Is really very telling because, of course, if you compare charter schools to our schools and people taking the test in the language that they're not familiar with.
Right.
We're not gonna do as well, and they're gonna continue to cream our students and reap the financial benefits for their districts.
Well, I, I can just, really quick, and I don't, I don't want to overtalk, but I think it's important, you know this. Our, our charter schools, for instance, in Achievement First, um, when I pulled it today, there's 1,092 Bridgeport students who go there. Capital Prep, uh, Preparatory Harbor School, there's 828 Bridgeport students who go. Great Oaks Charter School, 772 Bridgeport students who go there. New Beginnings, 495 students who go there. Park City Prep Charter School, 459 Bridgeport students, and the Bridge Academy, 320 Bridgeport students. So do the math, it's almost 3,000 kids who are...
And very few, and very few of them are.
So in Achievement First, we have 1,092 Bridgeport students as of today. Capital Prep, we have 828 Bridgeport students as of today. Great Oaks Charter School, we have 772 Bridgeport students as of today. Uh, New Beginnings, we have 495. Park City Prep, we have 459. In the Bridge Academy, we have 320.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to get the actual number of English language learners as a percent. For, for example, Capital Prep, which is the largest, correct? 10.4% English language learners, a 20-something point disparity between us and...
Achievement First is number one.
Oh, so, okay, I apologize. So, yeah, but e- even, although none of those numbers exceed 15% of English language learners, which is really, really something. They should not be approving any other charter schools until they are equitably educating all students, of course, all demographics, as we do. And final question is... Okay, you said, you mentioned the mobility rate of about 30% people with, within the district.
Mm-hmm.
When students move from school to school, is there any possibility of them being lost in the enrollment count for a period of time? No.
So, so state law, he- here's the law, and so you can get an understanding of that. When a student transfers or asks for a transfer, it's called an O1. That's an in-district transfer. When they ask for an in-district transfer, the homeschool or the sending school is responsible for that student until that child gets into the receiving school. Once they get into the receiving school, then it's no longer their responsibility to follow the child because the receiving school has that student who has walked in the door. We make sure, based on the state, we don't have, you know, truant officers or anybody to really go out. But what we do is we go through our due process that allows us to find that student and make sure that student, especially in district, got from point A to point B. That we do very well. Where we don't do very well is when they leave Bridgeport and they fill out, you know, at this point, um, a withdrawal form, and they end up going to Stratford or Trumbull or somewhere further than that. We don't really have anybody to go out and make sure that they got from point A to point B. We do have a brand-new record system that we are not allowing parents to have, um, copies. They can have a copy, but that copy right now is not an original. So at this point, it says it right underneath, so that the schools have to call us, and we can make sure that that student got from point A to point B. That's the new software that we brought in. I think it's important because it helps us follow through on where that student is. They said they were going to Milford. They still haven't gotten there. We are responsible in making a phone call saying, "Milford hasn't called for your official transcripts." Yep.
Mr. Medina?
Thank you. Can you go back to the other one, the Aqua one, please? Thank you. Um, I was just noticing in the Aqua and RCA, Central High School is under 40-plus participating. Bassick on Aqua is 9, Harding is 12. For Aqua, for RCA, it's 7 for Bassick, 2 for Bridgeport Military Academy, RA, and then 14 for, uh, on Harding. See a big gap, like, Central students are heading over there, and I know Central is heavily populated. Um, but like, why do we have that huge gap number in, um?
Yeah, I mean, that, that gap has been there for a few years. I don't know if I can answer that, meaning why there's such a gap. Uh, I can't say that. I know that Central High School does a lot of promoting to get their students into programming and into programs. I just can't speak of why, you know, Harding and, and Bassick are where they are.
Um, then you mentioned about, uh, my understanding is right, the data that you just gave was concerning the kids that are going out after, uh, January 31st.
Mm-hmm.
If a student came into our district from any other district or the state is not funding for the last student?
No. No. So it's, it's the students who are with us on October 1st is what it was. Those students who are sitting in the classroom. Those students who are sitting in the classroom, that's how they do their funding model. Um, I'm not saying I agree with it and that's the right way to do it, but that's the way it's been done for years. What we do between October first and January thirty first of the next year is consolidate. And reconcile those records that are in there to make sure that on October first, everybody we have in there was sitting in a seat. And that's where the concurrent registrations come in where, um, we, I don't want to say fight, but we. Prove that the child was sitting in a seat on October first at Bridgeport Public Schools. Our problem is, and 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 I think Mr. Traber brought it up and 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 everything else is. We have an influx of children who are coming in in January or in February. There should be some funding model to where they're giving us a percentage for those students who are coming in. Or prorating or whatever they're doing to make sure that those kids or we have some adequate funding, because that's not how it works.
Yeah, when when you're talking about special ed, and I didn't want to touch on that, then you're talking about those numbers could be crazy.
Absolutely.
If we're not getting funded for a special ed kid after that day, so I don't know if this is uh, only for regular ed.
Or it's just every student.
It's every.
Yeah, this is, this is every student, yep.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Mister Mister Traver.
Yeah, first off, following up on what Mr. Medina was just asking, did, have you analyzed whether those students from Central or Central Magnet or Central? Uh, the the other Central High School, the general uh, high school.
Are you talking about for Aqua and RCA is what you're talking about? Actually, it for for Aqua, it's Central Magnet, um, students who are coming in. And for RCA, it's a plethora of students who um, are in the arts. Yes, yeah. I I mean, I guess it also deals with absenteeism too, you know, when you're involved in these programs and you're going out. A lot of it is, you want to also make sure students you're sending are the proper students. Who are going to go there for a learning environment rather than the child who's absent every other day.
I just think that we need to make sure what you said a moment ago is correct. But I'm 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 just, you need to, we need to do a good job of marketing. Among our our regular high school students.
Yeah, I I'm in agreement. I mean.
I think there's self-marketing when you're at Magnet, but when you want to get in, we need to do a better job ourselves. That's, that becomes more incumbent on us to get in and talk to the students about what options are available. And I think we're probably remiss, my guess, my 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 assumption would be that we're remiss in not getting out there. And recruiting students who might be interested in Aqua or who might be interested in RCA. Uh, because they're in the regular high school. And so that would be incumbent on us to do a better job.
Sure.
Getting out, getting those students who might have an interest in something like that.
Sure, and I'm in agreement. We could always do a better job. I mean, that's that's part of the process.
One of the problems is the ability, the people to do that, but we, we do need to do a better job.
Sure.
Um, I want to go back to the Fairchild Wheeler numbers and draw attention. I'm assuming that these Fairchild Wheeler numbers are just the Bridgeport students from your presentation.
No.
The Fairchild Wheeler numbers, a thousand fifty six students include the suburban kid?
Yes. That was from ten nine.
Okay, so. Can you tell me how many of those thousand fifty six students are Bridgeport students?
Not at this point right now, but I can tell you at for the next meeting or I can get you that data of. Who of those thousand fifty six students are Bridgeport students?
So this is a high school that could have fifteen hundred students.
Yeah, five hundred per school.
Per school. And out of that, we have just over two thirds of it filled.
Correct.
And they're not all Bridgeport, and that's not the Bridgeport population.
No, not the, not the full.
We've lamented the number of empty seats in the building. And I was thinking that this was the five hundred. So it's not even, it's worse than that.
No, yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, and um, I want to underscore a point that I think Mr. Skolovic was making. Also, that if we're down two hundred and sixty four in the multi-language learners. Um, charters are not the place they're going, because charters are not the place that uh, recruit. Multi-language learners, they're not known for their capacity. Um, uh, and I want to emphasize what Mr. Medina just said. In my experience while teaching, um, I would get students back after October first. From charter schools who were pushed out as problem students.
Absolutely.
The charter school did not want to keep. And there was a, it was not unusual to find a special ed student pushed out because they were a problem student. They did not want that student there. They wanted to push them back into our student population. And frankly, I would often counsel the parent, the student was better off with us. Because the student was going to get more immediate uh, attention in the building. At at Bluffam where I was teaching because the special ed teachers were present and more available to that student. But it meant that they had kept them until after October first, so they got credit with the state. For having that student in their school until after October first.
Absolutely, um, the um.
Uh, the, I believe, do you have the numbers? Do you keep track? You gave us the numbers for all the pre uh, charter schools. I believe they're growing in Bridgeport because they've been allowed to expand. Now, we're we're not getting new charters, but I believe the existing ones are being allowed to expand.
I know they're building, they are getting a new building. Um, I'm not sure if it's new begin, one of those charter schools. They're building, they have a new building for pre K. So that's being built as we speak. As as I speak, and um, so there will be some uh, growth uh, for the pre K students. Uh, inside of the charters, but pretty much unless they're getting bigger buildings. They're probably at the capacity or somewhere around the capacity for the buildings they have.
In within the buildings they have, yes, but I believe that they are uh, moving some of, for instance, uh. Capital Prep is moving out of St. Ambrose and moving into a new building. So I believe that's to allow them.
To expand.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, so I I think that we just need to be aware, uh, because that is something that we need to be um, dealing with. Um, and it is a concern. Um, let me see, I had.
Don't you come back to?
I think, yeah, no, I think that's it for now. Thank you.
All right, um, Mr. Benahan, then Miss Hughes. Mister Medina had one. Mister Ben and Mister Medina, then Miss Hughes.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Um, I heard you about you talk about the state this, the state made this, the state made this decision and state that. The state, they don't see what we're going through. And you know, we, I'm tired to say this, and you, you guys, you have the team, the cabinet do amazing job. But they don't see what we're going through. Right now, you make the count amount of the students. I just give you like a three thousand six hundred eighty eight students almost go to a charter school. And the state, they don't see how much ma- how many kids we have. Imagine that we are recruiting these kids, you know, and it's not easy. And I I don't like when the state made that decision, when the state didn't come, it's very easy from the office. And make decision, but they don't come here and look and talk, sit down with you, all of you, and look the papers and go through about the books. Let's put it this way, that's the way I say about the books. And what you go through and you, what you have to do, what you do, sometimes you gotta do miracles. To be sure our books are ready correctly, you know, and I'm very appreciative that you guys do an amazing job, Edmonton. It's not easy, especially I see your staff working Saturdays and Sundays, you know, when you're supposed to make it relaxing with your family. You're working. The state, they don't see that. Us, we see that. And I just want to put that for the work up here because I really appreciate that you guys very do amazing job. So I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mister Medina.
Just rough number on that, uh, Fairchild Wheeler, Mr. Travers, about two sixty five out of state according to the numbers. We know the data is like one to three. Um, also, just on the the whole charter school, and you know, just. Later on, you can give me those numbers or get us the numbers. I was just wondering demographically as far as our district. For example, how many students, you know, uh, from Dunbar or Marin are going into charter schools? And I'm thinking about in the lines of, you know, demographically, also because we pay for that transportation. And, you know, transportation is one of our big hits to our our numbers. And we're sending kids to charter schools or a different spot, so I'm wondering where they're coming from that they're going to charters. You know, if you can get me some data there.
Can get you those numbers, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Miss Hughes will have, we're gonna move on and then come back to. Let's, let's get the rest of the presentation and then you can ask the question. Go ahead. You ready, you've spoken twice already.
Spoke once.
Good.
Um, I I just want to point out, we we can, you you you're born and raised. We've had discussions, looking at the mobility, you can look at the neighborhoods where the heat occurs. It just in my neighborhood, Hall is twice as high as Edison. The neighborhood has a lot more rentals. It's it's just one side, the other of Boston Avenue, and you have twice the mobility problem. Because the housing is much more densely rental housing. And so people are moving a lot more and that's part of what's, we have a housing insecurity problem in Bridgeport. It's worse than.
Yeah.
Thank you, Miss Hughes.
Evening, everyone.
Goodbye, Norm.
Last slide. Thank you. This is the summary of the Division of Curriculum and Instruction for the month of September, not September eighth through ten ten. The work that we've been doing. Our number one priority for the division is to support our principals and our teachers. We have seven directors, two executive directors as of last Monday and myself that are contributed to these numbers. There's approximately eleven hundred and seven classrooms in Bridgeport Public Schools. We've visited thirty six schools. The other two, S C A N and V L C are visited by our uh, special ed department. We've been through two hundred and eighteen classroom walkthroughs. This is where our, we have a strategic school plan where we. Visit, we don't, we're not on top of each other, but we visit different schools across the uh, district. Um, what this doesn't include are the number of teachers that are supported through through these classroom walkthroughs. We're gonna start keeping track of that as well. Twenty seven schools receive climate and culture support. We've had, between the two executive directors and myself, we've had twenty principal, what we call one-to-one support meetings. They include not only wa- discussing walkthrough results, but also strategic uh, strategic operating. Uh, brainstorming, if you will, with with the principals. We've had from professional learning, that's the P L. We have done one session for teachers and three sessions for administrators. I just thought that you would, this information would be useful for you to see that we are out there. We are on the ground every day of the week. Except Fridays, we do spend a lot of Fridays in the office.
Thank you. Do you have any further questions on the superintendent's report? On the report, yep. Mister Traver, go ahead.
Yeah, um. What is the school's climate and culture support entail?
Visiting with uh, attendance teams, looking at their uh, uh, schools are meeting weekly with attendance teams. So they're going in and uh, doing the attendance with them, also going in when there is any kind of. Unfortunately, we've had some tragedies in the district, going in and providing support within the school, uh, counseling support specifically. Uh, climate and culture, where uh, schools are preparing their emergency plans and submitting those and conferring on an as-needed basis for that as well.
So when you say there's twenty seven, take, setting aside the tragedies. How many of these are regular? You said dealing with attendance. I assume that's like business as usual.
That's the majority. There were probably three tragedies.
Were three tragedies, so twenty four. Twenty four are regular business. Um, of the thirty six schools visited, that means the twelve were not dealing with. Climate and culture.
Well, there's only one director in that department, so um, she gets the, you know, she's making the coverage by herself at those schools.
So they're all in line to be visited?
Yes, absolutely. And we have a strategic plan uh, between now and uh, Thanksgiving. Which will revisit and restructure it for the next three months.
So between now and Thanksgiving, the remainder will be done?
Yes. All schools will be visited by the majority of directors by Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Mister Medina.
Thank you. I see that you guys visited thirty six schools. And I just want to note that there's twenty principals that had one-on-one uh, support after. And I just, I don't know why I highlighted that and I just saw that, I like that number. And I appreciate that you guys are going back and having that one-on-one discussion. Um, but I'm sure all the other ones, and I would love to hear continuous time that, because that is great that they're seeing you guys and. Not only seeing you guys, but then you guys are spending that time to have kind of like that, those conversations.
To clarify that, there are uh, the classroom walkthroughs, all the directors prepare principal summaries. And email it to them after their visit. When we're, we meet as a division on Friday, we take a look at, we look at trends. Where do we need to provide more support? Where do we need to provide more professional learning um, to that end? But there's the two executive directors and myself do the principal one-to-one, kind of bringing together what we're seeing across the walkthroughs.
Congrats.
So no other questions? Um, thank you, Mister Crawford. Miss Hughes for the presentation tonight. Move on to new business. Um, the first item on the agenda, uh, went through the Instruction Support Services Committee. Um, and its approval of the Bridgeport Public Schools Debate League trip to Washington, D C. To participate in the Washington, D C Urban Debate League Dragon Tournament on November sixth through ninth, twenty twenty five. Is there a motion to move that, to prove that? Mister Traver, um, makes a motion.
Okay.
Mister Skolovic seconds it. Any further debate on that? Uh, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, um, that passes. The next one, um, this hasn't gone to committee, so um, we're gonna have a quick presentation on it. Um, approval of the Theodore Roosevelt School overnight field trip to the People State Forest, Barkhamsted, Connecticut, October twenty third through twenty fourth. Uh, so when you're ready, oh, click it one more time. Oh, click it one more time, I think it turned off. There you go.
Oh, good evening, everybody. My name is Jackie Simmons and I'm the principal of Theodore Roosevelt School. Uh, this is going to be our first overnight trip in about ten years, so we're very, very excited about this. My physical education teacher, Miss Ortiz, has partnered up with an amazing organization called Outside Perspective. And they focus on physically active programs, building trust, empowering children, teamwork, applying skills they learn. They go hiking, they go camping, uh, they go rock climbing, um, applying those skills, learning respect for the environment. They've done that since last year. She partners with them to fundraise. Uh, over the summer, they did some activities. They are looking forward to going to the People State First, uh, Barkstep, Barkhamsted in Connecticut. It would be approximately twelve students with two certified chaperones, certified in wilderness training and wilderness medicine. They will leave on Friday, the twenty fourth and return the afternoon of Saturday, the twenty fifth. Um, and they are going to go climbing, camping, looking at things at sunset. Making breakfast, making their uh, meals. Uh, and what we've done so far, um. Since they went last year, it's been really an amazing thing. We have quite an interesting group of children. Many children who you wouldn't think would be involved in this, and the parents are really, really loving it as well. So hoping to expand this program actually, um, after we go through this. Any questions?
Just to clarify, Miss Simmons, you said the twenty fourth to twenty fifth?
Yeah, so I see a typo on this because it says October twenty third, but it would be Friday, so I'll resubmit the package.
It, I'll just make sure that, um, we make the motion correctly.
Thank you very much.
Any question, Mrs. Skolovic?
Yeah, I apologize if any of this is packed and I haven't really had a chance to look at it. Um. Uh, what's what's the ratio of the the chaperones to?
One to six.
One to six, and that's in compliance with our. Okay, that's one. Everybody's medical clearance is cleared?
Correct.
Okay. Transportation, we're using, we transport another firm?
No, we have another private one and in the packet is the la- is. No, we have another private one, and in the packet is the la- is the pack and the insurance.
Good. And all permission slips is on that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions. Um, if you make the motion, can you just make sure the date is changed to twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth? Whoever wants to make that motion? The motion was made by Mr. Treiber. John, did you get that? It was off mic, but I don't know if you got it. I'm sure you got it. All right, the motion was made. Um, is there a second?
Second.
All right, um, all in favor, any further debate? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hope they have a great time.
Thank you so much.
Hope that we can get more students out there too. Well, for the wilderness. Oh, all right, the next item, have a good night. Um, the next item on the agenda, um, there was an error in the minutes, so we just have to, um, correct it to this date that's on the agenda. So if you, if somebody wants to read that, Mr. Treiber, put your mic on, thank you.
I I move.
You could just read it exactly how it's worked.
I know, I'm going to, but I think you gotta move for the approval of the correction of the April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five board minutes to read, quote, pursuant to the Connecticut General Statute Section ten dash two-one-five F, comma, Food and Nutrition Services, comma, Bridgeport Public Schools certified that all food items offered for sale to the students in the schools under its jurisdiction, comma, and not exempt, comma, from the Connecticut Nutrition Standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education, comma, will comply with the Connecticut Nutrition Standards during the period of July one, twenty-twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-sixty-four.
To to read?
To read, June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six, period.
So that was moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Skolovik. Um, any further debate? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Um, the next item on the agenda is approval to suspend bylaw ninety-three-ten for the purpose of media, of immediate implementation of policy P three-zero-one-one, internal control. Is there a motion to suspend the bylaws?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Kowics, second by Mr. Medina. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And, um, so that passes. So, uh, we're looking to approve policy P, uh, three-zero-one-one, internal control. Um, this went through committee, so Mr. Medina's moving it. Is there a second?
A second.
By Mr. Skolovik. Any further debate on this? All in favor, say aye.
Uh, aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Um, is there any further business tonight? So seeing none, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Mr. Skolovik, second by Mr. Medina. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourns at seven forty-eight. Have a great night.